I'd like to reconvene our regular session meeting for February the 24th. Mrs. Trevor Fielding, will you call, please?
Mrs. Briggs, here. Mr. Cattle?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Peeden?
Here.
Mrs. Pryor?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. West-Warren?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
We do have a quorum. Now we'll go to 3.02, and I entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda for February 24th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. 3.03. If we could all stand, please, for the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance. Forward march! Ready, step! Center, face! Halt, go! Present, o'er! Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, o'er! Center, face! Forward march! You may be seated. 3.04, student government.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kaye Shute. I'm student council, Sussex Central Student Council President. We would like to welcome Superintendent Owens and the Indian River School District Board back to Sussex Central this evening. It's hard to believe there will be March next week. Some highlights of events that have occurred since December to include but are not limited to. Our boys' basketball team finished with an impressive 12 wins. And if you're following us on social media, you will note that David Maker reached the 1,000-point mark at the Dover game. Congratulations to him. Brandon Spencer was named to the Henlopen All-State Conference, sorry, as an honorable mention. The DIAA first-round playoff game will be held at Smyrna tomorrow at 6:00 p.m., and the game is streaming via the NFHS network if you cannot attend in person. Our girls' basketball team finished the season with five wins, and they're looking forward to our new venue this year. And all the students are really excited for the new gymnasium. Lenaya Wright was named to the Henlopen All-Conference as an honorable mention as well. Our cheerleaders are doing their best at games, adding all that extra energy. Our indoor track and field athletes fared well in last weekend's state finals, with Zegga Shepherd Tunnel seventh in shot put, Summer Harmon sixth in long jump, Victor Perez fourth in shot put, and Kai Thornton second in 55-meter hurdles. The wrestling team has had a lot of impressive individual wins as well as team wins. The Sussex Central won over Sir Rodney at the DIAA Dual Meet Championship semifinals. At the 2025 Henlopen Conference Championships, Jaden Meth, Peyton Conway, and Cluse Motar all earned a third-place trophy. Austin Deco won a second-place trophy, and Malachi Stratton and Evan Cordrey both won first. The DIAA Wrestling Individual State Championship will be at Cape Pen-Lopen High School this Friday and Saturday. The Sussex Central Arts Department was also just awarded a Southeastern Delaware Artist Studio Tour Grant, which will be used to enhance our printmaking capabilities. The department is also proud of student Amelia Meyer, who is the Golden Key Award for the Delaware, who won the Golden Key Award for the Delaware Regional Art and Writing Competition. She earned an honorable mention. Seven students successfully auditioned for the Sussex County Senior Honor Band and will be participating in the festival on Wednesday and Thursday, February 26th and 27th, at Cape Pen-Lopen High School. Four students successfully auditioned for the Delaware All-State Choir and will be participating in the festival Thursday through Saturday, March 6th through 8th, at Dover High School. Jake Gunst successfully auditioned for the Delaware All-State Band and will be participating in the festival Thursday through Saturday, March 20th through 22nd, at Lake Forest High School. And the Golden Knights Marching Band will be performing for East Millsboro and Long Neck Elementary Schools on Thursday, March 13th, marching in the Ocean City St. Patrick's Day Parade on Saturday, March 15th. The director of our theater program, Mr. Work, wanted to be sure that we shared the success of Spencer Camlin, the president of Take-Two Drama Program. His original play won a finalist standing in the Delaware Young Playwrights Festival, and this is a first for Sussex Central, and the theater team is overly ecstatic. The administrative team for academic and school events, the administrative team has been very positive and responded with most often "yes," and "how can we help?" to many of the student initiatives. After several-year hiatus, Mrs. Mancuso and the sophomore class brought back the winter ball. We had close to 100 students in attendance. Special thanks to Mrs. Assistant Principals, Ms. White and Ms. Elephant, for chaperoning. We would also like to thank Constable Messick for volunteering his time to support as well. It was a ball, literally. The Sussex Central High School Future Farmers of America will have eight Blue Jacket recipients at the 95th Annual Delaware FFA State Convention on March 25th, 2025. The iconic FFA Blue Jacket is a beacon of community support and pride. We thank the sponsors and donors for the support of our program to all the students. We would like to thank and recognize ID Coordinator, Mr. Leon, and our facilitator, Assistant Principal White, and the full International Baccalaureate Team for the development, support, and facilitation of the ID program. The team just went through its five-year review and received high honors. The team is looking forward to growing the process further, the program further. I apologize. In two more weeks, daylight savings time will spring the clocks ahead. We are looking forward to all the spring and end-of-the-year events. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. 3.05. I would entertain a motion for 3.05 and 3.06 for the approval of the board meeting minutes for January 16th and for the executive session minutes of January 16th.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. 3.07 and 3.08. Approval of regular meeting minutes for January 17th, excuse me, January 27th, 2025, and for the executive session minutes of January 27th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Recognitions. Dr. Owens?
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Our first recognition this evening is East Millsboro's own Jason Orland for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science. And I think Mrs. McCurry will join us at the podium for that recognition.
Good evening. On behalf of the staff and students at East Millsboro Elementary School, it is my honor to introduce Mr. Jason Orland, East Millsboro Elementary School's math instructional coach and interventionist, as this year's recipient of the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching for the State of Delaware. This prestigious award is a testament to Mr. Orland's deep-content knowledge, exemplary pedagogical skills, and commitment to student success. His expertise in mathematics instruction goes beyond the classroom as he supports both students and teachers in mastering complex concepts with clarity and confidence. His strategic use of student assessment data ensures that every learner receives targeted support, and his reflective teaching practice continuously refines and enhances instructional strategies to meet the highest standards. Beyond his personal excellence, Mr. Orland's leadership has had a lasting impact on our school community, fostering a culture of continuous improvement and collaboration. His dedication to best practices in math education has resulted in measurable growth in student achievement, and his ability to inspire those around him has made a difference in countless lives. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Jason Orland on this well-deserved honor.
Okay, our next award goes to some members of our transportation department. If Mr. Tidwell could join us here at the stage for these exciting recognitions. Mr. Tidwell.
Thank you for allowing me to have time to recognize just three of our district transportation folks. On October 12th, 2024, the Indian River School District sent a team of five individuals, or bus drivers, up to Appquinnamuck Fairview Campus to participate in the DOE School Bus Rodeo. We did sweep the top-five places, but they only did award the top three. They competed in two different sections. The first section was the competition stage area, where they had a written knowledge test, a pre-trip bus inspection, a smoke bus rescue, and an interview portion. And then there was a driving portion, where they did a simulated school bus stop and stop line, a straight-line test, a right-turn test, a diminishing clearance test, an offset alley backing test, parallel parking, alley docking, and then a railroad crossing. Within that, I want to recognize our top-three finishers. Placing third was Tracy Bonville. Placing second was Suzanne Dodwin. And the overall winner of the DOE School Bus Rodeo, placing first, scoring the highest, was Tara McGee. Within the station and competition area, each of the 12 tasks is scored with a participant gaining or losing points towards the final total amount, which determines the winner. Wait till Tara gets up here because... Tara, being the highest scorer in the winner of the DOE School Bus Rodeo, Tara will be representing the state of Delaware and the Indian River School District in Austin, Texas, on June 28th and 29th at the School Bus Driver International Safety Competition, sponsored by the National School Transportation Association.
Okay, our next, our final two recognitions this evening go to members of our very new esports teams at Sussex Central High School. So Dr. Davis, I ask if you could join me here to recognize some valuable members of those esports teams and some recognitions on hard work here this school year.
All right. We had a couple things in regards to esports. So the Sussex Central administrative team and school community proudly recognize the outstanding efforts of Robert Gibson, Jeff Gartman, and Alisa Southworth, who have shown incredible dedication and passion as coaches of our esports teams. Their commitment to fostering learning and supporting our students has generated well-deserved excitement throughout our school. A little "did you know"? Did you know the first recorded esports competition took place in 1972 at Stanford University's Artificial Intelligence Laboratory? Participants competed in the Intergalactic Space Ward Olympics, with the grand prize being a year's subscription to the Rolling Stone magazine. Some of us know that, right? Esports have come a long way since then. Today, they generate billions of dollars worldwide. They actually make more money than the NFL. We are thrilled to share that Sussex Central esports teams advanced to the Smash Brothers Mid-Atlantic Regional Playoffs. It's important to note that there were hundreds of teams in entrance. Our two teams are to be honored and recognized for their standings. The Sussex teams were two of the 64 teams in the ERP that represents students from states along the Atlantic coast, from Maine to Florida. Our Ultimate Knights team members included Dancy Niz Chavez, Alex Lamoore, and Garth Layfield. The Sussex Central Knights team included Trevor Dixon, Ace Walsh, and when Ace comes up, take a look at his shirt, and Jackson Wilkerson. But that's not all. Our Sussex Central Chess team emerged as champions of the Eastern Region, competing against students from Delaware, Maryland, Pennsylvania, and New Jersey. Congratulations to our Sapphire Kings, who clinched the title, included Dylan Cushman, Robbie Johnson, Dan Yin, and Chance Parker. Check and mate. We can't wait to see where our talented students and dedicated coaches take the esports program in '25, '26. I know they're looking forward to getting to the new facility as well. There's a nice little esports arena just over my shoulder, and our future looks bright. It's a whole new world, and we're in it. So if I could, coach, at least one student athlete, come on down.
All right, let's give one more round of applause to all of our recognition students.
Now we'll move to our public comment session, 5.01. The school board welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during our public comment session at the beginning and end of each public session. Members of the public speaking at individuals or a member who represents an organization will be allotted up to three minutes. As per our board policy, BDDH, in order to comply with the First Amendment, the board will not entertain protracted public comment within favor of or against a staff member. If a speaker makes defamatory statements or evades the privacy rights of a student or employee, the speaker is responsible for such statements and may be held liable. We thank you for adhering to this policy when you share your public comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. We have one signed up this evening, Emily Pettyjohn. Good evening.
Timely communication is essential. When important information is shared over an extended period, it creates anxiety and speculation. This has occurred as others in the district have had staff meetings to discuss the upcoming referendum and the necessity for a reduction in staff, while others like myself have not received this information. I am simply going on hearsay from others. As a comprehensive induction lead coach at North Georgetown Elementary, I feel helpless to the current teachers in the program as they ask questions based on the information that they are gathering from other district employees. The importance of the CIP program is to support and retain teachers. However, this is being stripped by the decisions that are being made. These teachers have spent countless hours learning the current curriculum's planning lessons and learning effective strategies to meet the needs of their students, not to mention the hundreds of dollars in their own furniture supplies and classroom decor in order to make their classroom an inviting and safe environment. Additionally, the Indian River School District has spent a lot of money training and equipping our new teachers through various professional development opportunities. Why would we want to send our best to other districts when our students deserve the best? Once again, my information is from others and from the videos that have been released to the public. But as I explored the district's website, I can see areas that can be cut before the reduction of staff. Eliminating programs or reducing pay for committees and coaching staff should be the district's first course of action. While I am a huge advocate for athletics and extra programs, these should never take priority over classroom instruction. In my opinion, it is my opinion that a business should be run as a household, as you would run your household finances. You put the needs before wants and extracurricular activities. Based on the salary schedule, it costs a district $17,754 for the local portion of a year-one teacher. By reducing EPR pay, such as the number of paid coaches and the number of advisors for particular pathways at the high school level, you could potentially retain several teachers. This also goes for eliminating committees and programs that pay $1,000 to $2,500 per member. These amounts may seem small when discussed in isolation, but once explored, I'm sure you're going to see the amount of money being paid out for EPR to be alarming. When I first began teaching, they were not paid positions, and people filled them simply because they saw a benefit for students. I understand that this may not be popular in today's time, but when jobs and students' education are in jeopardy of being impacted in a negative way, tough, unpopular decisions are necessary. It's important to remember that not every student participates in extra programs or sporting events, but every student should be given the opportunity to be an active participant in the classroom. By reducing the number of classroom teachers, this will lead to larger class sizes, diminish individual attention, and a decline in overall student performance. Research consistently shows that smaller class sizes and more available teachers correlate with improved student engagement, higher test scores, and better social-emotional development. Consider the student that needs small group and remediated instruction in order to learn a new concept but does not have an IEP. Teachers can give this because of the current class size. This will be stripped from these students because of the reduction of staff.
10 seconds.
Thank you for your attention and commitment to our students' future. Together, we can find solutions that protect our teaching staff and in turn enhance the educational outcome for all students. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to new business, 6.01, school choice applications for the '24-'25 school year.
Good evening, everyone. On your board docs this evening for the '24-'25 school choice applications, you will see a total of four school choice applications. We are asking to accept all four of those.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous.
And for your '25-'26 school choice applications, this is the first process for next year's school choice. We always bring this to the Board of Education at a February board meeting. You will find a total of 114 school choice applications. We are asking to accept 111, decline two for discipline, and decline one for attendance.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
Mr. Lewis, we've had a lengthy conversation today about the school capacities, particularly on that second report. I did have a chance tonight to talk to Mrs. Blannard and take a look at the report, and I've made a suggestion that you sit down with her and the policy committee. And I think we're going to have to blend two things together to make this less confusing, not only for the parents and the audience in the district, but probably for the 10 board members you see here this evening. I don't think the policy wording is correct when it is aligned to the new capacity that we're getting. I think we're going to have to use another of the numbers, I think the utilization number, but I think we're going to have to change our policy to make that work.
Okay. Explain, I guess I need explanation on your question about the capacity numbers, the new capacity numbers?
The new capacity numbers that was just put out, I think, within the last month?
Yes, last two months.
Yes. That is a huge difference from the previous report, as you can see in the '24-'25 report. And for the board members that are not aware of this, I'm going to ask Mr. Joe Dooley, he's here. They conducted this study with a group, I'm not even sure the name of the group, that come up with this new capacity numbers. And as you can see in many of the buildings, there's quite a difference in what it was '25-'24 school, '25-'24 school year and '25-'26 school year. But from what I understand, that these numbers that we're showing here for the '25-'26, that is the total student capacity that we are able to fit into that particular building. Now, where our policy says with the 85% of school choice, as you can see, many of our buildings were at that capacity, at 85 or above.
I don't think the state took into account, when they approved the new Sussex Central High School, the current population was close to 2,000 at that time, and now this new utilization number is not far from 2,000. So I don't know if the state needs to relook at when they approve CNs.
Actually, Mr. Peeden, if you will look at that number, Sussex Central is now stating that their total capacity is 2,447 students.
The new capacity?
Yes. Yes.
So it has increased based on the footprint with the new building? But they do look, when they do the utilization factor, they're looking at classroom space based on the square footage?
And that's what I'm referring to, the utilization portion of it?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis, did you get a chance to look, has you seen copy this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. The utilization that we looked at brought the numbers in some cases pretty close to where we should be, but there are some pretty significant changes, particularly at the elementary level.
Yes.
I, it's one of those things that the state's going to do. I think they've done it to other districts, and it's just our turn to do it. I don't necessarily agree with it. I think they took a rather simple thing and have made it rather complicated at this state of the game. But I think this is going to have to be something we're going to have to review further to take a look at size and particularly our school choice for the future, because this is going to be a huge difference in what we decide which schools are available and not.
Fair enough.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we have to, did we do the motion?
No.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion for six point oh two for the school choice applications for the twenty-five, twenty-six year.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh three, National School Social Work Week proclamation for March the third through the seventh.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. I would ask Mrs. Reed to join us at the podium for that proclamation. Mrs. Reed, good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. This year's theme for the National School Social Work Week is Unite to Ignite in Celebrating Our Impact. Whereas the importance of school social work through the inclusion of school social work programs and services has been recognized in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five and the Individuals with Disabilities Act, school social workers are exceptionally skilled in providing services to students who face serious challenges to school success, including disability, poverty, discrimination, abuse, neglect, mental illness, homelessness, bullying, familial stressors, and other barriers to learning. School social workers are needed more now than at any time in recent memory, as more students are struggling with mental and behavioral health disorders, with nearly one in six children from ages two to eight having a diagnosed mental, behavioral, or developmental disorder. Whereas individuals who wish to access community mental health services often find such services unavailable, inaccessible, or inadequate. School-based mental health programs are critical to early identification of and early intervention for mental health problems. Whereas school social workers being licensed mental health professionals in schools in the United States here in the Indian River School District provide a necessary assessment, interventions, counseling, family outreach, and community referrals. School mental health programs are critical to, excuse me, let me go back. School social workers maintain knowledge and school culture and school climate which are necessary for responsible school safety planning. Whereas fewer than one in five children in need of mental health services actually receive these services, and research indicates that school mental health programs improve educational outcomes by decreasing absences, dropout rates, and discipline referrals while improving academic achievement. School social workers serve a vital, as vital members of our school's educational team, playing a central role in creating partnerships between the home, school, and community to ensure student academic success. Whereas this celebration of School Social Work Week during the week of March, beginning March the third, highlights the vital role of school social workers in how they play in the lives of our students within the Indian River School District. Therefore, it is resolved that on this day, the twenty-fourth of February in the year twenty twenty-five, Dr. Owens would like to recognize and proclaim March third through the seventh as School Social Work Week in Indian River School District. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion at this time for that proclamation to be accepted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh four, the twenty-five, twenty-six district calendar. We are going to table that until March. I guess I do make a motion, I'd accept a motion to table this until March.
Motion to table till March.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh five, the twenty-five, twenty-six school start and end times.
Yes, in your board docs, we have a document that lists the school times for the upcoming school year, the twenty-five, twenty-six year, and with the new high school being built on the Sussex Central campus, we're also relocating Millsboro Middle School to that location, and then we have Ennis across the street. So in order to assist with smooth traffic flow, we're recommending changes to two school times. One would be Sussex Central Middle School. We would like to change their start time from seven twenty-five to seven forty and their dismissal time from two fifteen to two thirty. And then for Howard T. Ennis, we would like to change their start time from seven fifty-five to eight-ten with the dismissal from two forty-five to three P.M., and that would just assist with the flow of traffic on and off the school campus.
Any questions, concerns, comments? Entertain a motion at this time to approve those start and end times?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh six, inclement weather days.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. As we are all aware, we've had a very active winter season here, so we have lost eight school days due to inclement weather. As the board is aware, we did build in five days, and we also removed one of those days through our board-approved calendar change for March fifth. That remains, that means two days do remain over what we had previously recovered, which means the last student day currently will be Tuesday, June seventeenth, and the last teacher day would be Monday, June twenty-third. The state does require thirty days notice, as we discussed last time, for any calendar changes, and we would like the board to consider the possibility of adding additional minutes onto the school day beginning March thirty-first with that thirty-day window to give us that timeframe for notice of calendar changes. There are a few options here, all of which would require board approval, and they would start again March thirty-first and go through June thirteenth. So the first option is ten additional days. Our last student day would be June thirteenth, and the last, excuse me, ten additional minutes, thank you. The last teacher day would be June eighteenth. That would generate the additional two days needed to recover the two days that we were over. Another option would be the last fifteen additional minutes, which would add on, would recover those two days, and would also recover a little over more than an additional day if there are additional inclement weather days. And the final option is twenty additional minutes, which again would recover those two days and would recover an additional two days in the event we had additional inclement weather day. If not, we would again pull back from our current departure on June thirteenth for students. If the board does choose to make a motion on either of these three options, we would need to make that motion contingent upon a memorandum of understanding for our teachers' union, as contractually they need to, would have to vote on any additional minutes onto the day. So again, ten days makes us whole, fifteen minutes adds an additional day on top of those two days.
Ten minutes.
Minutes, sorry. Keep me straight there. Fifteen minutes would give us the two days plus an additional day, and twenty minutes, those two days, plus an additional two days in the event we have additional weather.
What would your recommendation be, Dr. Owens?
I think we should consider ten or twenty. You know, the twenty is safe. Sometimes we do have additional weather in March, and then I think our families have become, our families and staff have become accustomed to pulling back from that thirteen, that, excuse me, the end day on the thirteenth, which is this year, we're pulling back some. So we've used all those days to this point, obviously. So I think my recommendation would be twenty additional minutes to then allow us to have some wiggle room if we do have an additional storm the rest of the year. Happy to answer any questions.
I make a motion, we accept superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments?
How did you say those minutes would be implemented? The twenty minutes, how would, how would they be implemented?
So we've looked at this in the past, it's been some time, because we've had some mild winters. In the past, we've added on at the beginning and the end, I think one year we did twenty minutes. So we did, I think, five at the beginning, fifteen at the end. With this, I believe, we have talked with transportation, and it, we do need to work through that, we've got a month to work through it, but we do have bus drivers that after they do our runs, Indian River runs, they do runs for other districts. So that additional ten minutes does put them right against where they would have to get to that next run, so we have to, have to look at that, but my recommendation now would be ten at the front end in the morning and ten at the back end at the end of the day, which puts our late schools up right at four o'clock, which is, we know is very late, but trying to recover some of this learning time.
Has there been any studies done, just trying to find out that the best educational experience for the students? Is there any detrimental effects taking away full school days opposed to piecing together a few minutes on each day? Have you heard anything?
I, I have not. You know, obviously a full day, as much as, and I think that's what we need to look at, our calendar, a full day is the best option, but in this case, at this point late in the year, the minutes are really our, our only option, as opposed to looking at taking days off of spring break or elsewhere. The other option is certainly going later into the school year, but at the end of the school year, it's kind of tough because you're geared up for your summer job or whatever you're going to be doing. Some folks have already scheduled vacations right at the end of the school year, so that makes it tough where if you're adding in the minutes to the day, you're at least recovering it in smaller increments leading up to that point. We may not have a lot of students on those last days coming back the week after what was already anticipated being the end of the school year.
And after Owens, if you tack the days on the back, isn't it correct that seniors would not have any additional days so they'd miss out on the learning in general?
That's correct.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? I would entertain that, well, we have a motion on the floor and a second to do with Dr. Owens' recommendation of twenty minutes per day. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh seven, Sussex Central High School Change Order Notifications.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On your board docs, you will see three change orders this month for the Sussex Central High School Major Capital Improvements Project. All of these change orders have been presented before the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and all of these are being presented as board notifications as they are below the dollar amounts outlined under the board's procedures for change order approval thresholds. Mr. Brad Callen with Richard Y. Johnson is here to respond to any questions you might have. Absent of any questions, we are seeking school board approval at this time.
Any questions on the change orders that were presented for those that were at the committee meeting? I would entertain a motion to accept.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh eight, Indian River High School Culinary Year Two Planning.
On board docs, you will see an attachment showing the location of the existing culinary classroom at the Indian River High School and the adjacent locker room, as well as a proposal for ABHA architecture as presented at the recent Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. Recall, there were discussions a while back regarding the need for the school to plan for subsequent years of this program until such time that a CN and major cap referendum allows for construction of facilities at the school to house this program. There are two scenarios on the table which are currently being explored. One is to utilize the vacated Millsboro Middle School kitchen space for days where the culinary program requires the use of a more elaborate kitchen. Another scenario is to move forward with construction activities in the existing culinary classroom and the adjacent locker room space. This latter scenario of making improvements to the existing classroom and the adjacent locker room space poses some unknowns which need resolve prior to being able to determine the feasibility of this scenario. We have an hourly not-to-exceed proposal from ABHA for architectural work required to flesh out the preliminary design and provide a preliminary cost estimate for the improvements to these rooms of the school, thereby providing the needed information for the school board to make a decision on spending minor cap or some discretionary funding on this space prior to an approved major cap project. The request before you for consideration tonight is for the approval of the architect's proposal.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I don't hear none. I'd entertain a motion to accept the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Six point oh nine, Selbyville Middle School and George Washington Carver Cooling Tires Engineering Proposal.
On board docs, you will see an attachment which is a lump sum proposal from Gypasoti Associates, a mechanical engineer, for forty-eight thousand dollars for engineering work on the next two cooling tower projects at Selbyville Middle and Carver Early Learning Center, as presented at the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. The project would be constructed using enhanced minor cap money and would cost approximately one point five million dollars. The Carver Tower is way beyond being on its last leg, and maintaining it is becoming very costly. In a similar fashion to the last cooling towers, we would most likely bid the project with the much worse Carver Cooling Tower as the base bid and the Selbyville Middle Tower as an alternate. The request before you for consideration tonight is for the approval of the engineer's proposal.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept the engineer's proposal.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Old Business, seven point oh one, Major Capital Planning.
Thank you. Brief update on Sussex Central High School project. Site work has been slowed due to weather, obviously. Our exterior metal panel installation on the classroom wing is eighty-five percent complete. The first delivery of interior doors has been installed, I saw them a week or so ago, they look very nice. Mechanical, electrical, and fire alarm finishes are underway in our classroom wings. Painting is underway in the auxiliary and main gymnasiums and in the classroom wing. Flooring installation is occurring in the classroom wing, offices and classrooms. The gymnasium basketball backboards are installed, and the school board and running track should be completed this month. Our executive group continues to meet monthly to explore cost savings, construction alternates, and project obstacles. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Seven point oh two, Howard T. Ennis.
Yes, we're still awaiting the remainder of the project closeout paperwork from the architect, providing that we receive this information prior to the next school board meeting. This will be the final report to the school board on this project, so fingers crossed we get that prior to the next meeting.
Seven point oh three, the March twentieth referendum.
Thank you. We have been busy with the referendum, multiple school visits. We heard from one of our teachers here this evening. We continue to visit schools. I'll be at East Millsboro tomorrow morning, bright and early, seven fifteen, to present to that group, as well as a couple other schools. We're almost done with sharing with our faculties. Also been on radio, done interviews for a television broadcast, so those continue. We've got some HOAs, as well as rotaries and other organizations, meeting tomorrow night and throughout the next couple weeks until we get through to the twentieth. So very active with getting our information out. We have created some short videos that help to, help our community to understand what this referendum is all about, explain reassessment, as well as additional information, so those are available on our website. on our website, and I encourage everyone to visit the website, check out the frequently asked questions, check out the videos for more information. I will say we're getting some good questions. Really, the bulk of our questions are around reassessment and how that impacts. I want to, um, this process, I want to thank Tammy Smith for, uh, being at, uh, these presentations with me. She's provided, uh, just a wealth of information and we just want to make sure the public is as aware as possible. Another question we're getting quite frequently is the ability for the board to consider the ten percent tax on the reassessment. So, um, some concern that we may pass this referendum and the board has the ability to consider a ten percent tax. I don't know if, if Tammy is here, if she could kind of explain that. I know you've explained it in the past, Tammy, but I think it's good for the board to hear that again and then have some discussion around, uh, how that may impact, especially if the referendum does or doesn't pass.
Yes, so by code, in a year of reassessment, there's a provision that allows the board to collect up to ten percent more in revenues in the year of reassessment that we did, that we collected in actual revenues in the prior year. So whatever our actual revenues collected ends up being this year, you can add ten percent to that. That would only be on current expense because the other tax rates are calculated based on the funds we need, so the ten percent doesn't make a difference there. Uh, but that is only in a year of reassessment. So of course, we've, none of us have been through that, right, since nineteen seventy-four, but going forward, the reassessments will happen every five years. So every five years, the board will have that option. Um, we are slated to collect a little over forty-six million dollars in current expense revenues this year, so the ten percent would be four point six million dollars. Um, without passing a referendum, that would end up being a Band-Aid going into next year but wouldn't solve our deficit spending issue in the long term. So that, again, it's totally a board decision that we will end up discussing in June, most likely for a decision with the tax rates that we have to set for July.
But that, that additional ten percent's only good for one year. It doesn't carry over to yours too.
It's not ten percent every year.
That's correct.
We will, so right now, the current expense rate is two dollars and thirty-five cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value. So when we have as concrete of numbers as we'll get with the new assessments, then we will recalculate that rate down and factor into that, that ten percent. So that ten percent will stay there going forward, um, but that's not something you can change every year. Because typically, current expense is only changed by referendum. This is one caveat to that, that only happens in a year of reassessment.
I, I will say this, just in the past, working on referendums, I think it's, it's always a difficult task to ask the public to step forward and help us. And I think we need to look at this referendum, and this is my opinion, I'm only one, one board member. I think we should look, uh, at the ten percent, and I do not think we should collect ten percent more, particularly if the referendum passes. I think we should, we should take what community says we have and move forward, but I think if it passes, we should not look at that ten percent.
And just so you're aware, that ten percent is, um, a provision that allows for changes with appeals and delinquencies and growth. So a district like ours would normally grow about three percent a year, so leaving those revenues stagnant for the next year, you miss out on that growth. Um, but to your point, if a referendum, if a referendum passes, I don't think we need that money. Um, if it doesn't, I think we, if it does not pass before the end of June, I think we need to have that discussion.
Any other comments on the ten percent? So we don't have to act on that?
We don't have to act on it. That's up to the board completely if they wanted to, to formalize that, but, um, you know, I, I think what was made.
I think you can wait until June, that you said June would be a good time to relook at all of this.
Yes, so typically, we'll start talking about the tax rates for next year in May-ish, um, and then for June is when we usually, the June board meeting is when we take the board vote. So like I said, the, the current, the new assessed values are going to be changing for a while. Um, there's appeals, there's the informal appeals going on, there's the formal appeals. We have things like the bill that was filed a few weeks ago to exempt all agricultural property. So whatever that final number becomes is what we use to calculate that number. The problem is, I think, appeals are going to be going on past June, so at some point, we're just going to have to pick a number and go with it. Um, I don't think it'll change that drastically, but I, I don't have any science behind that.
But going forward now, we have a referendum coming up in March, I'm sorry, June. We don't have this discussion again until June. That's not putting it out there to the public unless tonight we decide that if the referendum were to pass, that ten percent is a moot point. If we wait until June, just putting it out there, the public could say, you didn't make your mind up, so you're, you, we're going to pass this referendum, or we're not going to pass this referendum in March, but we still have that ten percent staying out there. So just whatever the, personally, pass the referendum, there would be no ten percent, uh, in, in addition to what we would do for the referendum. But that's just my personal opinion.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, that would probably...
I'd recommend, I make a motion that should the referendum pass, that the Indian River School Board not consider the additional ten percent on the assessment, assessment rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Seven point oh four, the GW Carver Consent Update.
Good evening. Um, we sent in the quarterly updates after the second quarter ended. That was submitted in February, and we're going to be having a community advisory board March sixth, which is next week, four o'clock at Howard T. Ennis, for anyone who'd like to participate. And we continue to monitor the district plans for disproportionality, both in graduation rate and discipline. Any questions?
Any questions, concerns, or comments?
Should we let you know if we plan on attending or just go ahead and show up?
You can just show up.
Thank you. Now we move on to committee reports. Eight point oh one, Buildings and Grounds, Mr. Steel.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we had our Buildings and Grounds meeting on Monday, February the tenth. Discussed a lot of what you've already seen this evening, the Howard T. Ennis, the major construction update, change orders. One additional thing, we did have the opportunity to see, there was this, uh, discussion on the athletic courtyard barrier gate at the previous meeting. Uh, we did have the opportunity to see a rendition of what that gate would look like, and I don't believe there were any, uh, issues at the, at the meeting on that. Uh, looking at Old Business, um, the monthly work order report, the last thirty days, ninety-three tickets were open, eighty-eight tickets were closed. We've got about forty tickets currently active. Uh, Dr. Owens gave a brief update on the futures committee, although I think weather's still kind of a little bit of a hindrance, um, in, in some of those meetings. Under New Business, we did discuss the Indian River Baseball and Softball Practice Fields, uh, the current condition, and they're probably not playable, uh, at least for this, this season. Uh, the teams would most likely go down to the pile center for their practice. However, there was a discussion on tying in a, a well for irrigation, uh, that could be used on both the lacrosse practice fields or the lacrosse fields, practice fields, as well as the baseball softball. I think where we left that, uh, Mr. Dooly was, there was more investigation that needed to be done on exactly what the scope of work is, and, you know, if there's any volunteers who would be willing to move forward, you know, to help, uh, you know, in those two endeavors. The, uh, Artesian Well, or the Water Company, has, uh, inquired about the possibility of installing a water supply well on the property near the front of the site along Armory Road. Uh, they will be invited to come to a March committee meeting and show us, uh, some type of rendition of what they want to do and allow us the opportunity to ask questions, and then the board would have to decide should we want to proceed from that point on. The culinary, uh, year two planning, we've already discussed. The cooling towers, we've already discussed. The last topic we discovered was the HVAC control operations. Uh, we looked at this as being a potential cost savings, about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Uh, some of that would be turning the boilers off in the summer, turn the HVAC cooler system off in the winter, and take a look at the, uh, ESCO ranges for temperatures in the building to reach, reach a comfort level that we can live in. And you'll see a little bit more information, uh, coming, uh, with, with that in the future. Building, uh, Grounds Committee adjourned at five o'clock on March tenth. Next, excuse me, next meeting is March tenth at five, adjourned at six sixteen P. M.
Thank you, Mr. Steel. Eight point oh two, comprehensive school safety, Mr. Castle.
Thank you, Mrs. Ray. On January thirty-first, constables attended in-service training at the Oceanview Police Department involving simunition scenario training. Simunitions are specialized marking rounds used by law enforcement, military personnel, and civilians to engage in high-stress force-on-force training. These rounds replicate the look and function of live ammunition but are engineered to deliver non-lethal impacts. When fired, simunitions leave a colored mark on the target, providing instant feedback on shot placement and engagement accuracy. The rounds are commonly employed in shoot, don't-shoot drills, active shooter scenarios, room-clearing exercises, and hostage rescue training. From February fourth through the sixth, Constable Eric Watkins attended a range master development firearms instructor course hosted by the Oceanview Police Department this three-day, twenty-four-hour development course is designed to educate lead firearms instructors or supervisors, supervisors who are assigned as the range master on a variety of topics to ensure their firearms training programs and range facility are operating safely, safely, reducing liability and defendable in court. This is the most comprehensive range master course available. This course is only taught by staff instructors who have held a range master supervisory position during their career. This is a classroom seminar training event that will include many practical exercises. The topics covered were the defining the duties and responsibilities of a range master, classroom and facility safety, outdoor, indoor range safety, range development and maintenance, managing various training programs, firearms qualifications, documenting training and qualifications, managing various inventories such as ammo, spare parts, range supplies, et cetera, ammunition and equipment testing, range staff selection and development, firearms and use of force policy, EPA, OSHA, NIOSH regulations, ANSI standards, and lead in hearing testing. And lastly, um, we're in the process, the two high schools are starting to implement, um, some plans to use our weapons detecting systems for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So we're kind of in the infancy stages, but we're starting that as well. And that's everything from my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Eight point oh three, finance, Mr. Peeden.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Owens presented uniform requests for the Sussex Central High School baseball team to purchase an alternative black with blue baseball cap. This is an action item. Todd Furman presented a uniform request for Selbyville Middle Boys Lacrosse Team. These are being paid out of lacrosse booster funds, and the uniforms follow the regulation uniform color requirements. That's an action item. Mrs. Smith and Ms. Bunning presented an, uh, analysis regarding the possibility of a position change for ag teachers from ten plus two with EPR to ten-month teachers with no EPR. CTSO funding would be considered separate. An analysis was based on estimated time ag teachers spend outside the regular schedule. This item will be brought back to the committee with a revised analysis based on a more detailed estimate of teacher time. Ms. Smith reviewed the January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five financial reports, and this will be taken to the board for an action item. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So we need to act on the Sussex Central High School baseball hats as well, uh, okay, so I guess we'll do them individually. So their presentation was made for, uh, black baseball hats for Sussex Central's upcoming, uh, ba- baseball year. Any questions, concerns, or comments?
So I think we had some questions, so just to confirm, I do see Dr. Davis is here. They would be worn on the days that have been previously approved for the black jerseys, so I see your head shaking, yes, for that. And we were wondering what the funding would be. Uh, you clarified that this would be out of boosters, correct? Thank you.
I would entertain a motion at this time to, um, accept.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Then we go to Selbyville Middle School Lacrosse Uniforms. As you heard, they did meet the criteria. Um, any questions, concerns, or comments? I would entertain a motion to, um, accept.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. And then the Indian River High School Boys Lacrosse Uniforms. Met the branding guide and everything. Any questions, concerns, or comments? I would entertain a motion at this time to accept.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Eight point oh four, curriculum, Mr. Neal.
Thank you. We met on, uh, February tenth, um, focused on three areas, first being, um, recognizing the contributions of our mental health counselors throughout the district. You've already heard that, um, March, what, thirty-seventh has been designated as, uh, National School Social Worker Week. Um, but during that meeting, a very informative presentation was given highlighting, uh, the many different, um, tasks and responsibilities, um, these, uh, district employees undertake. Um, in addition to, just hearing that presentation, which was, you know, right, very impressive, um, I'm in quite several of our schools weekly, and I, I've had the privilege of seeing them in action on more than one occasion this year. Um, they're a godsend to the, the everyday functioning of our school, so we're very fortunate to have, uh, them on, you know, our school staff, so. Um, the second thing we discussed was, um, the fact that now whenever there's an inclement weather day, um, online, you will see on the district website, uh, something indicating for parents an option that they will have for their children to participate in some kind of academic pursuits. Um, maybe the students aren't too thrilled about that, but I'm sure parents, uh, hopefully will take advantage of, uh, the opportunity to, uh, you know, have their students engaged on.
New House Bills for the one hundred fifty-third General Assembly. We acted on several, uh, bills. House Bill eleven, we took a neutral position, passed to the Senate, and that was to amend technical team of the lower two, to special education records.
Title fourteen of the Delaware Code relating to special education records. Also as well was House Bill twelve, which we supported, and that was to amend Title fourteen relating to teacher academic scholarships, and that does not, as we mentioned, House Bill thirteen, this is discussed, we use opposition position, and that was to amend the Republican Party, which is learning, early childhood education. House Bill twenty-two, we supported, and that was to amend Title twenty-four, and that was to amend the Delaware Code relating to house. That was to reduce traffic. Also as well was House Bill twenty-eight, we took a neutral position with Sussex Tech and Milford voting no, and that was to amend Title fourteen of the Delaware Code relating to the Sussex County Vocational High School. There's possible amendments coming in that, so that would be forthcoming. House Bill twenty-nine, we supported, that was to amend Title fourteen of the Delaware Code relating to Delaware public education profiles. House Bill thirty-two, we supported unanimously, and that was to amend Title fourteen of the Delaware Code relating to school officer funding for the SROs. House Bill thirty-eight, we supported, regularly moved and seconded and passed, and Samirna Epstein, and that was an act to amend Title twenty-nine. There was only one Senate bill, and that was forty-eight, we took the position to support, that was unanimously, and to amend Title eleven, the Delaware Code relating to disorderly conduct in reference on the school bus. We also reviewed Mr. Toll, three proposed bills coming in committee. We discussed the bills and shared all of us, you know, our thoughts on the bills, and that was for, was three bills related to training for school board members, how to remove a school board, the limitations of seclusion and restraint by the SROs and constables, so those are forthcoming. It's not become a bill yet, but we were able to go through, gave our opinions and everything so that Mr. Toll can go back and tell them what needs, what we're looking at, yea or Old business, Mr. Toll reported and updated on the Legislative Committee, the National School Board Association Conference, that's going to be held in Atlantic, Georgia. Conference date or dates are April fifth through April seventh. We have two that are going to be delegates, it's Mr. Ackerman and Dr. Handwell, and Mr. Booker will be the alternate for the delegate assembly. And Delaware Dinner, did you discuss that as well, Mr. Toll did, so. We went into discussion with the governor's recommended budget, that was discussed robustly. In addition, Mr. Toll reported on what the Sussex County Legislative Breakfast Meeting back in January, so he just scared, discussed some of the issues brought up there. Also as well, Mr. Toll brought up the Kent County Legislative Breakfast Meeting with topics to discuss, discussion for that. Mr. Toll also gave a recommendation for the upcoming school board elections, like where there's, how many seats are open in each county. There are twelve in Sussex, six in Kent, and nine seats in Newcastle. And gave us who's filed, and of course, that has changed since we met back at that date. More general discussion, there was a lot of discussion about equalization, as well as a letter that was received by Secretary of Education Martin, and a discussion about the reassessment, of course, that's on everybody's minds. Meeting adjourned at eight fifteen, and our next Legislative Committee meeting will be in Dover, and that will be on April twenty-third. And that's the end of my report. Thank you. Eight point oh seven, Special Education Task Force, Mr. Neal.
No report.
Eight point oh eight, policy, Mrs. Taylor.
Okay, so we met on January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. I was unable to be there, but I reviewed the tape, and I want Dr. Owens and Mrs. Blannard to fill in if there's anything I miss here. Okay, so there were two policies accepted by the Policy Committee for second readings, I K E A, Recovery of Original Credit Opportunities, and J H F B, Constables' Use of Deadly Force. Both of these will need to go up for board action tonight. There were policies under review also, and those were C C, Administrative Organization, just a very small change of a she-he to they, E E, Transportation Services Management. That was around information on buses that contractors were driving for the district, and the district needs time to remove their equipment. They don't get their equipment back. It basically was stating that the contractors would have to have the cost for replacing that equipment. E E A, Student Transportation Services, that was also under review, and that's basically about the bus discipline matrix, and that has to be reviewed yearly with necessary parties. J G, Student Discipline, changes made on attorney recommendations due to changes on the Title eleven and DOE Regulation Updates. Further changes are to come. Pep really reviewed this and clearly defined deadly weapon paragraphs were in that new, that policy. Title nine, removal of J B C B dot seven, effective for Title nine complaints made on or after eight-one, twenty twenty-four. We had two Title nine policies posted, one for complaints filed before eight-one, twenty twenty-four, and one for complaints filed on or after eight-one, twenty twenty-four. A decision was issued on January ninth, twenty twenty-five by the U.S. District Court that vacated the twenty twenty-four regulation nationwide. DOE issued a statement in February twenty twenty-five that any open or ongoing Title nine investigations initiated under the twenty twenty-four Title nine regulation be reassessed to ensure it aligns with the twenty twenty-nine regulation. Based on this information, the district is seeking board action tonight to revise and replace policy G B C B dot seven with the twenty twenty version. So we'll need action on that also. We will, we adjourned at four seventeen, and the next meeting is March tenth, twenty twenty-five, to begin at four P. M.
Any questions, concerns, or comments? I would entertain a motion to approve the second readings as Mrs. Taylor presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Eight point oh nine, I R E. I'm sorry.
Title nine. To vote on? The combination?
What's that?
To revise and replace.
Second meeting, is that separate?
Yes, so we want to revert back to the twenty twenty Title nine policy version.
Okay. So then we would entertain a motion for the Title nine policy to revert back to the way it was prior to August.
Correct. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Eight point oh nine, I R E A representative.
Good evening. Blair Catlin Brown, School Social Worker House out of S D S A, and I R E A Vice President for Teachers. Following up on last month's remarks about concerns with immigration things that were going on, I want to thank Dr. Owens for the statement and the information you gave out to staff. That along with the statement and website that Secretary Martin put out, I think really just helped people feel like more grounded in what they needed to do and what protections were in place and everything, so we really appreciate that. It really just sort of calmed the waters as much as we can right now. Also want to thank Ms. Blannard and Dr. Owens for the invitation you guys have given us to come out into the community for the referendum. Myself and some other members of the executive team have been able to go out and talk to the public and hand them those postcards, even if they seem to be shying away from us. I say just take it and give it to someone else then. So we're trying to get out there and make sure people are aware of what's coming down the pike and that, you know, there's some support out there amongst our membership. Cassie Queen wanted me to pass along that the Para P D Day on January thirty-first was a huge success. All of the feedback that she received in the survey was positive. A huge thanks to, thanks to district staff and administrators who came out for the day to teach workshops and participate that day. Everybody really seemed to enjoy it, so we can't wait to do that again next year. Yeah, I know that there was, the new flyer was sent out for the I R E A Scholarship fundraiser. Due to some things, we have changed the location from where it was at Ladamas to Grotto's. It's going to be the same day, April third, write it all down on your calendars, we want to see you there. It's going to be fun, we had a lot of fun last year. So April third, from three-thirty to six-thirty, it'll be out on the patio, so bring a jacket in case it's a little chilly, but you can head inside to the bar or just get some food if you want. But we're looking forward to, I'm really impressed with Melissa Abbott's ability to find us a new location so quickly, so that'll be a great event again this year. With conversations around the snow days and adding the minutes to the calendar, obviously that's something we'll have to talk to our members with and getting approval. So two things we wanted to pass along that we know will be things that come up. One is with childcare. So if, depending on when those minutes are added, some of our staff really have to fly out of the buildings already to be able to pick up their children on time, to drop them off on time with, you know, when daycare is open. So we would just ask that if that is going to be moved forward with, that we, that admin would be understanding, district would try to work with staff as much as possible. Obviously, we need to operationally keep the buildings going, but, you know, we can't make the daycares change their hours, so we would just ask for some consideration around that. And I understand there's a lot of things that play into this, but continually we hear from staff, they would just like to know if the board or the district is asking the state to forgive some of those days. I understand there's a lot of things that go along with that, but I'm just passing along, but that's one of the things that we consistently hear, so we'll probably be looking for some guidance to be able to make people feel comfortable with that as we make these changes. And lastly, as the public comment earlier tonight alluded to, well, not alluded to, said, staff is very stressed out. We are under a shadow, a cloud, as we wait to see what these displacements and these rifts are going to do, and so all we ask is we know that everyone's being paid attention to the contract and everything, we appreciate that. Just move, continue moving forward with kindness and consideration for what's best for our students, what's best for our staff, and just, let's all just have grace with each other, because everyone's a little bit on edge. I know you guys are too, I know it's hard for everyone involved. So just keeping that in mind, and we will, we'll get through it, because at the end of the day, we're here for the kids, and we will make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent's Report, nine point oh one, monthly activities.
Thank you. My monthly activities are uploaded into board docs. I do want to highlight one thing from the past month. I was able to participate in the Delaware State School Counseling Week Celebration and Recognition up in ceremony up in Dover, where Matt Eskridge of Millsboro Middle School was named a state finalist for the Delaware School Counsel of the Year Award. So we are excited for Matt as he moves forward with consideration for the final, final recognition there, potential, but very proud of him and the others that were highlighted that evening. Very proud to be part of I R S D that night in Dover. Thank you.
Financial reports, ten point oh one, financial summaries for month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
The report, the reports on board docs are as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, so we were fifty-eight percent of the way through the fiscal year. We'd received eighty-eight percent of our total budgeted revenue, ninety-four percent of budgeted discretionary revenue, and ninety-eight percent of budgeted local tax revenue. We received two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in interest in January. We've spent fifty percent of total budgeted expenses, fifty-eight percent of total discretionary expenses, and forty-four percent of our budgeted tuition-funded classrooms. And then Howard Tiana suspended fifty-eight percent of budgeted expenses.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept a report.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Ten point oh two, detailed information for month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Our student activity funding balance is approximately one-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. We have eight-point-eight million in federal funds available and are holding one-point-four million in donations and internal accounts.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept a report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Ten point oh three, major capital improvements for month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
In January, we paid out four-point-one million in major cap expenses.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept a report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Ten point oh four, minor capital improvements for month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
For the allocations available, we've spent and encumbered five million and have about one-point-five million remaining. We did get some good news in the past couple of weeks, the enhanced minor cap money that we received, the twenty-twenty-three money, the Finance Directors Group had asked for multiple times for the restriction on spending all of the current and prior year money to get any new enhanced minor cap money. That language was put in the mini-bond bill to remove the restriction. It was passed, signed by the governor, and we have received the twenty-five allocation with no restrictions, but just over nine-hundred thousand.
Questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Communications, Dr. Owens.
Thank you. Overnight trip by Sussex Central and Millsboro Middle, both March twenty-fifth through twenty-six to Newark for the F F A. Also an overnight trip by Indian River High School, all Eastern Choir members, April twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh to Hartford, Connecticut.
Any questions? I'd entertain a motion at this time to accept a request.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Eleven point oh two, use of facility requests.
Yes, one request for Sussex Central High School cross-country course and bathrooms on May seventeenth. The range date would be May eighteenth, by Indian River School District's Let Me Run Teams.
Questions, concerns, comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept that request.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
We did have a late request come in today for National Junior Honor Society at Selbyville Middle School. They need to change their date. It will be, they need to get information out earlier because it's the end of, just after the next board meeting. So for advertisement purposes, I talked to Mrs. Wright this afternoon, she was okay with us moving forward. It's not on the agenda because it came through today, so just an awareness to the board will allow them to move forward with that date change, and we'll formalize it at next board meeting on the board agenda. I just wanted to highlight that as well.
Personnel, twelve point oh one, personnel agenda for February twenty-fourth, twenty Any questions, concerns, or comments? I'd entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, excuse me, and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Twelve point oh two, personnel addendum for February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Any questions, concerns, or comments? I would entertain a motion to accept the addendum minus. I would entertain a motion to accept the addendum minus number 18.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. 18, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Nope.
Nope. Will we send that? Hearing none, there will be no action taken. 12.03 is just for our information. It's a list of retirees that we're having, and we wish them well, because they go in a different path. At this point in time, we come to public comment, 1301. We don't have anyone that has signed up, but if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forth and speak at this time, you may do so. Seeing no one come forward, we will move on to addendum, 1401.
Motion for the SEC.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to reconvene.
Executive session.
Executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now back in executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will convene our meeting back into regular sessions.
I'm a boost man.
Going to the addendum for February 24, 2025. I'd entertain a motion for number 18. 18 is on the one that we did not vote on when we came into our first meeting.
Hang on a second. You'll see this is motion, that's motion right there.
No action is taken on 18? Hearing nothing to come, there's no action taken on it. There being nothing else on the agenda to come before the board, the meeting is adjourned.